Yeah, anyway, let's um go ahead and.
Yeah, let me take, let me take up two spaces here.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize for a second, I usually, okay, so today I'm gonna ask that uh I've got a motion that we um. Approve the um consent agenda as uh. Well, we approve the agenda as submitted in the packet.
You too, Chris.
Okay, Gail, did we get a second? Sharon, thank you. All in favor, aye? Aye opposed, nay, okay, passes, then I'd also like uh to have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the regular uh. Meeting minutes, the current financial reports, statistical reports, donations report as submitted. Motion?
I'm going to accept the consent again.
Okay, and second, Garrett, okay, thank you Sharon Garrett, all, all in favor, aye? Aye opposed, no, okay, those pass. Okay, uh we'll jump right into uh the public comment period, do we have anyone? No, okay, I saw the microphone being given to Ben over there and I didn't know whether we had any. So, uh lacking public comment period, let's jump right into report uh. Looks like Clay, you're doing it for the uh fence, right?
I guess so.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone, um so the, the Friends Book Sale, as you know, the last one was held on the fourteenth and uh. Uh fifteenth of this month, they raised a little over fourteen thousand dollars, they had a, a good result there, there um. We've asked them for a, a little more of their, their space uh that they're currently utilizing, a little more of the space back. Uh here on the same, on the mezzanine level and um. In preparation for that, their next sale coming up on first Friday, they'll be uh open for a half price sale from seven to nine, that's on uh. Friday, May fifth, and on the Saturday from uh May sixth, from ten to four, they're having a bag sale, so you can get a. Bag full of all the books you can cram in it for five dollars, and teachers will be able to, to fill bags for two dollars. So they're trying to, they've got a, a surplus of, of books right now and they're trying to lighten the load a little bit, but uh. Very good uh results on the, on the sale um. I think that's about it, I, I, that I have for them, um they're uh bringing in a, a couple new members um. Uh but I think you all knew the uh last two that they brought on board, but they're recruiting some, some others now, but um. Yeah, that's about it.
Excellent, Clay, thank you. Um I might ask, how is the consolidation of space gone, the fence now has enough room and can. Can work, but we've reclaimed some of that for the um uh library, I mean, the law business and. Misery, we're calling it, thank you. That we're, we're sort of through some of that and.
Work in progress and a lot of progress has been made up to this point, yes.
Excellent, okay. Um, any questions, Clay? Susan, could we get to?
It's good morning, everybody, I want to thank everyone who joined us for yesterday's Maya Smart event. Your presence and support was appreciated and noted by attendees. Gisala Hashmi, Betsy Carr, and Maren Campbell from the Honorable Jennifer McClellan's office. Joined over sixty civic and community leaders, board members, library staff, friends and foundation board members for breakfast. Jen Dool and Maya Smart moved on to book babies and toddler time here at Maine yesterday. And Maya was interviewed in our teen space by Mike's, Mike King with Radio One. Later that evening, we had forty-four donors join us for the donor reception. And roughly a hundred and fifty members, community members for the evening session from seven to eight P M's, including Michael Paul Williams. Whose November editorial sparked the idea for yesterday's event. Comments that we heard were positive and recognized the library as a place for this type of conversation and effort. I want to quickly share an excerpt of a comment shared uh with a board member this morning by one of the evening's attendees. I'm so glad I went, I invited our grandson's mother and hoped she would go, which she did. She said she really enjoyed it and learned a lot. I can get overwhelmed sometimes thinking about all the problems in the world and whether we are making a difference. I remind myself of the starfish story, which I'll have to share with you sometime. I was really encouraged, there was an event last night for people who wanted to learn more about giving their kids the best chance at life. I could feel the goodness in the room. Any other comments um or suggestions, please don't hesitate to share those, but either God or I will be following up as appropriate. Uh Scott will, in just a moment, share with you a call to conversation document, which was shared with breakfast and owner reception attendees, and we can talk about that. Related to grant activity and partnership updates, we want to thank Virginia Credit Union, Town Bank Foundation, and the Friends. All of whom supported uh the Maya Smart event. Grants have been submitted to the Allen and Margot Blank Foundation in support of the Gelman Room Concert Series fiftieth season this fall. And to both the George and F V Say Foundation and Richard and Carolyn Wathme Memorial Trust. In support of early childhood learning programs here at the library. Grant submissions are currently in development to the R E B Foundation, Dominion Energy Charitable Foundation, and the Universal League Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan, any questions for Susan? Okay, um sure.
I think we need to applaud Susan, Jennifer, and Sue, the team. Because they worked relentlessly on an event that was at a larger scale than I believe we've done. Since I've been on the board, and they need all the kudos we can have to give them, so can we give them a brand?
I'd like to quickly add that um you can definitely see Chris's hand in that entire event. And then she, she was alarmed when I said that earlier, I think, to her, but the um, you can definitely see. That the foundation worked very closely with the board and the presence of Chris on this, and I think that went very well. And I think the materials that were produced on this were a level above what. Foundation has done, what the library has done on its own in the past, the two together really put together some, some nice materials. That uh you should have copies of somewhere, I'm sure, so uh anyway, uh I think Chris also deserves a real round of applause. Okay, um Scott, why don't we turn things over to you as to their admin report?
Well, I'm gonna carry on and talk a little bit more about the Maya Smart event. Uh this was a document that was handed out at our breakfast in the morning, and that was just an amazing opportunity for us to. Bring the partners and uh the people who are working with early litters, working directly with. Uh with small children and birth to five-year-olds together in a room and hear just Maya Smart talk about. Her journey as a parent and why she wrote the book, and this book, I believe, is, is one of the best ones I've read. I think in many years on, on the concept of helping your child to learn. Um and as you said, Chris helped us kind of come to identify this as an issue, it was really uh. Memorialized in our strategic plan, you'll remember that this is a key component, a goal in our strategic plan. It's been a goal of our organization for many years, but I believe the focus on it now is really been dialed in. So, what I'm excited about is that this, that catalyst that started when we did the strategic plan, when we came out of COVID. We're launching, um launching an effort that the community needs because as we said, uh. Sixty percent of the children showing up in kindergarten aren't ready, so we need to help parents and do our job as a library to help get those children ready for school. So, that's what that day was about, it was just, it was so thoughtful and considered the way it was designed, so we had the breakfast in the morning. Then Maya Sharp, Smart was able to come here and do a program for book babies. And actually see it in action and connect with um the children, with parents and children in the community. And then we had that follow-up conversation in the evening, and I don't know that everybody knew that we, the, the foundation remembered to. Uh send to try and bring parents to the table. Um part of our, one of our strategies or curriculums that we do with early literacy in children is the basics. And in the basics, one of the key components for that to be successful is parent rental envir- involvement, and so we sent a bus. To each of the branches to pick anyone up who couldn't make it to the Vir- Virginia Museum of History and Culture, so they could have an opportunity to attend. So, I have to say, you're a hundred percent correct, they thought of everything, and we covered all of our bases. Um and it is just a launch, now the hard work begins, we have to keep going with what we started. And so I'm excited about that, I, I believe there are people in that room who heard it and they're ready to influence their neighbors and friends and community partners. And there were also foundation uh representatives in the room, and they were able to see our efforts. That we're serious about this and we're gonna be a leader in it, and so. That's what this document says to them, we distribute it to them, and so we're putting down a marker saying, this is what we're gonna do. And so I am grateful to you all to be supportive of it and get right beside us and make it happen.
And remember, with this board who voted unanimously that this was Scott's priority. And everything fell out from that, so yeah, you, you guys are the ones who started it.
And I have to echo with, and say it was a fabulous day, you know, and uh. This is so critical, I haven't been in education all my life, I've seen children who are in middle school and never had a book in their home. You know, so there's no, there has not been a concerted effort toward, you know, being literate in, in many, too many homes. And you know, it needs to start early and, but the thing is, a lot of parents don't know where to start, don't know what to do. And one thing about Maya's book, it is straight talk, it's, it's not lofty, you know. Research above, you know, the average person, they're simple strategies that people can do. And it's nothing, you know, that you have to go out of your way really to do, and this library can support everything that's in her book. You know, that, it was a perfect choice, it really was, and that's our roadmap toward early literacy.
I, I, I'll comment that um I thought the mix of uh organizations that were there yesterday morning. Was just phenomenal, that you really had a lot of people there who would take this back to the community, and the one, one concern I, I have always with these kind of things. Is to discuss, they were preaching to the choir a little bit, uh which is always, you know, that you have that, but how do we make sure it's getting out there to the community? And I think that that mix of people will help get it out there, you know, I'd love to see other things and, and I have some ideas, Chris, you and I can talk about later, but how you. Maybe get that book in the hands of, of others who aren't coming to library functions, aren't going to some of those things, but do have other community things. Um it is very, just skimming it, it's a very straightforward book, and if we could get it out to more people, I think that would, would be helpful. But the, the group that you, you guys lined up, Susan and your team, really was just um, it, it was almost intimidating. Uh you had so many people there who were just real community organizers and workers and who had dedicated. Many years of their lives to uh, to literacy at different stages of, of that, so. A great, great event in that respect, um did you want to also talk about the, as Susan said, the engagement form now, or is that later?
That would be, that was this document.
Is that the document you, you were referring, okay, okay, I wasn't sure whether there was, whether you were talking about the um, the sheet, the, the, the simple. Do you really sign up um the cards that uh Shannon lent me a, a pen for yesterday, and I said I was gonna work on it later, but. I didn't bring one with me today, um but there was also a sheet handed out that I thought was. Very simple, but useful, and it's something that if it's not in the packet, and I haven't gone through, we might wanna. Make sure that people know they can do that too, as far as.
Was it the orange piece of paper?
Yeah, the orange.
Yeah, the orange sheet of paper.
People had real trouble with that, they did not find it simple.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well.
So you must be smarter than.
No, I, I wouldn't say that, I think I'm probably just used to seeing forums and. I, what I liked about it was it just said, okay, who are some people that you'd like to see included in this, reached out to in this?
Yeah.
And I think it's always nice when we do that, whether we're saying, okay, who can we reach out to and help the foundation uh put a gentle touch for money? Or whether we're saying, okay, how do you get people to, to look at these things? So I mean, I, that's what I liked about it, and, and the concept, I don't know about the uh, the form, how well it read, but the concept of. If you weren't there and you didn't get one of the forums, um one of the things I wanted to stress today is. If you take a look at the book, and Scott can probably come up with some copies of it if you weren't there, um take a look at the book, read it and say, okay. What organizations in my community, or that I have contacts with, could um, could take this and run with it? And could, you know, get this out to their uh, their constituents, the people that, that they have contact with, and um. And I think, you know, if you can put down two or three of those each, it just broadens that base that we reach and help Chris's. The, the initiative that Chris is spearheading, spearheading a lot, really gets somewhere uh as far as reaching those people who didn't come yesterday. So, okay, um.
So, and then you're coming out of the box, and you have a couple things in front of you, which is our three, two, one liftoff, which is an early. Childhood, helping children get ready for school, so we're putting our money where our mouth is and we're taking action, so this is a program that'll happen this summer. And then you have our summer reading program, which will kick off early, we'll kick off June tenth and go to August sixth. We have uh, and that takes me to our hiring update, we have uh positions advertised for uh. Early learning interns, and so they are going to help us do more with that program, we need to do. More programs, more activities, more story time, so they will be hired during the summer to help us do more.
Have we done funding for, uh we're, we're squeezing funding from somewhere for two?
Well.
Or more?
I'll get into that.
Okay.
Our funding uh opportunities from, that the city is helping us with, uh I've got good news on that.
Okay.
Um so, we have all those positions out, uh we're gonna continue to seek those. Uh those people to help us with this, with this initiative, um and other hiring updates I have is we have uh hired uh. Uh two new people at the main library, Christopher Sloss and Hannah Kilgore, uh they're library technicians and they've started. Um at Broad Rock, we've uh hired Gina Ardent, Ardent, uh she started Monday, um and then at the main library, I am. Bittersweet to report that Lynn Vandennes is going to retire. Lynn is an employee who has worked for the library for fifty years.
Wow.
So as we turn a hundred, we have an employee who's been here for half of those years. Um we had a very nice reception for Lynn yesterday, Ben and his team put together a, a recognition. And just a chance for us to meet her family and uh really uh recognize her achievement. It is probably not anywhere close to what she's given us. Um she is responsible for really carrying the Gelman Concert City series, that has been going on for, is it forty-seven years? Almost fifty years, so she has carried on that concert series, and that is a program that lets, that enables musicians. We have a lot of talented musicians in this community that have concerts, that they may not be able to perform on the Altria Stage or the Carpenter Center, but. They can showcase themselves and share their s- uh talents with the community and expose people to music that they may not be able to hear. Um and that's been going on for forty-seven years, she also led the effort in the art, art displays, so the galleries that you see here, she helped. Figure out how to get the art hung on the walls in the Dooley foyer, uh she has been an integral connection to the art community in the city of Richmond. Um and she's done it for over fifty, about fifty years, and finally, First Fridays, that was something that she has been, First Fridays for. Probably as long as First Fridays have been going on, I have no idea how long those have gone on, but I'm gonna tell you, Lynn is an employee who has given of herself to this. Institution, she has a public service um just attitude and awareness, and she is, is just. When you think of a public servant, that would be Lynn Vandennes, um so she's given so much of herself to our library that. Just recognizing her yesterday was really nice, we're all very sad to see her go, so. Just want to share that with y'all.
Did she do an oral history, Ben?
She's a little cagey, she's very humble, and she uh is uh.
And is she here today?
She takes Wednesdays off, because she has worked every Saturday for the last fifty years.
Yeah.
I, I don't know for how long, but she has worked Saturday.
Wow.
And she will probably be out in her garden today, she is a uh, a very avid gardener and uh. She is my, really one of my helpful contacts with gardening, so I'm gonna miss her for, not only her. Art and music and all of the things that she's done, but her gardening tips, so, very lovely person, if you have a chance, maybe reach out, send her a note.
Yeah.
Um she would very much appreciate it.
Her last day is at Gelman.
And we have a lot going on Saturday, so we have Elvitra Belshes will be working with us, I'll, I'll, I've been talked about Saturday. Right now, um hold on, I just, uh so, I'm gonna let Ben talk about Saturday, and he can fill you in on all the stuff we have going, because this is National Library Week. So, we're having a big week, we not only had Maya yesterday, we had library workers appreciation day, we've had, we've got events on Saturday. Um so, but back to uh staff changes, so we say goodbye to Lynn. And we say hello to Charlie Schmidt, Charlie is our new law librarian, and uh.
Oh, hello, I'll stand up so that everyone can meet me, um you know, you know, I'll sit down, so I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're good.
But I'm also, uh I've, I've been an adjunct professor for over a decade at V C U, so I'm like, oh, this is like a classroom. Anyway, um I will be brief, uh Scott and Ben asked me to come down and just introduce myself, I actually have a fairly long history with the library. Um I was looking back, I first worked in Susan's position in two thousand and six, then um spent six years on the Friends, twenty-five years as a president. Uh I also subbed in for Melvin and the Law Library in two thousand and thirteen, that was ten years ago, and I always. I've stayed connected to Richmond Public Library, and when Melvin transitioned over to Hall, the position came well on, and I thought it was. An op- just perfect opportunity, but I'd worked with Melvin before, we've done a lot with the Law Library, the legal workshops, know your rights workshops, a lot of outreach. Um had bigger plans, but like with many things, the pandemic has, you know, derailed that, and so getting back on track, but. Um so I'm honored to be joint, rejoining Richmond Public Library and um transform not just the law library. Um but as we've talked about, uh the business, law and history section, what we are working on, and told them about Richmond Room. I wanna, I wanna do spoiler, but um. It's in the strategic plan, yeah, exactly, so um. Rebranding the space of the Richmond Rooms, starting to do outreach, starting to just uh get everything in a row, get organized and that sort of thing. My background is, I'm, I'm not a librarian, I started out in nonprofit um development, fundraising um. Nonprofit, and sort of executive work, then decided to have a second career as a lawyer, went back to law school, and so I've been practicing. Um in, uh I've been in private practice and worked for um public service and also the state uh as a lawyer for the last. Ten years or so, and so um I'm really excited to take the law library and the resources, the very unique resources to Richmond. So I don't know how much you'll know, but every jurisdiction has a law library, but it's most of the time in the courthouse and not very accessible to the public. That you all know, so really building the, focusing the collections, making sure there's more remote access. As with all things, you know, law, law libraries have uh been transitioning from print to digital, making sure that more access and also. That we're stay focused on service, so again, you know, using connections we have and outreach to bring in. Experts to bring in folks to continue to do the uh legal workshops, know your own workshops, take those off of branches, a lot of ideas. But also building into the space itself, Richmond Room, to look at, um having folks come in, having a landing pad for. Um small business resources, nonprofit resources, my background also, Chloe, Ben, the rest of the staff. To then get them connected to the next place, we are the library, so I, just in my first couple of weeks. It's been all kinds of questions from, how do I find out more about advanced medical directives to um. I want to know more about the zoning process in the city of Richmond, right, and so starting there, getting them connected, saying, okay. Next stop is the clerk's office, next stop is City Hall, next stop is this, um but it's just, it's really, um it's. It's, it's, it's really privileged to be back and do that, so um, thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
We're really glad to have Charlie, and I'm excited at the direction we're gonna go with the Law Library and that area of the building, we've got big plans. From the strategic plan, uniquely Richmond is gonna launch from there, and so we're gonna do more with it, so uh we have a bright future there. Um gosh, other things to celebrate. I'm gonna let the less, rest of that report stand, and I'm gonna turn it over to Clay for a brief report on North Avenue and where we're at with that, because. The water damage from December is still being repaired, so.
What's taking so long?
So as, as the, these things sometimes go, since there was an insurance claim involved and, and multiple city departments, it took, took a bit of time. To actually get, get uh uh work uh moving and contractors in place. Um at, at this point, we uh um, all the drywall work is complete. Uh the painting related to that was done, we have new carpet uh throughout about eighty-five percent of the, the building, the only carpet we. We didn't have to replace within the workroom and in the meeting room, but we've got uh, but new fresh design uh um. And, and the carpet scheme looks really nice, uh we found out uh just yesterday, the city's gonna come in and replace our, all of our lights. Um which, if they're gonna do it, now's the, the time, so we're, we're uh glad about that because uh um. They're older fixtures, so they'll, a few of them will be changed, just the L, LED, but the other fixtures will be uh changed completely. Um this morning, they were uh pulling out some old cabling and things, I mean, they're gonna do a little more touch-up paint, I think, before it's over. But we're to the point now where we can uh get some fixtures and furniture moved back in, and uh we're gonna kind of work around the. The existing uh, the ongoing work with the lighting, but um it looks like we're on track, that we should be able to. Uh be ready to open up before, before June, well, that's, that's the, the current plan, can you think of anything else, Cheryl, that's. We've got furniture ordered, we're waiting on it, it should be here by the uh middle of the, the month, and um. But yeah, everything's on track, finally.
As far as they can.
Thank you.
Any questions? So we are hoping to hit the May fifteenth target, that could still happen, it might be May thirtieth, so. Remember, we had extensive damage here, the water ran for about three days, I mean, literally, it was running out the doors, so um. That Christmas water situation hit a lot of folks, and so North Avenue took it pretty hard. I'm optimistic that once we're done with this, it'll look like a new location.
There've been, there've been some improvements made.
Yeah.
You all were able to change some things.
We had, we had a lot of loss, I mean, we lost about forty-two hundred books, um some furniture got damaged. So we've been adding books to the collection, those new books will go back into the collection, we're backfilling and replacing. Making sure that we're putting books back in the collection, they're gonna move, so.
We lower the sightline a little bit?
We're trying to, yeah, we're trying, we're trying to make a couple changes in there to modernize it a little bit, improve like the light in there, it always seems a little dark in there. So uh the light, extra lighting will help, opening up pathways to the windows, there aren't a lot of windows in that building, and so. The few windows we have, it'd be nice to have better sightlines to those, and uh the carpet, the new carpet is gonna add a lot to the building, so. This takes time.
So we'll meet there soon after.
Yeah.
Yeah. One thing I would say, I, I had hoped when it happened, uh but early January, we were over there looking at it.
Yeah.
That we'd have it open for um spring break for the schools, uh now it looks like we at least will make it. Before summer reading program starts, so you know, when you look at it, it's, it's not nearly as critical a week or two now. As long as we get it out there before those kids are out of school, and um I think, you know, it, it is, we're also fortunate that our libraries are very close together. And that um.
Yeah.
It really is, what, a mile and a half to the next branch?
I think the main library is the closest location, so Ben has told me that we're seeing a lot of North Avenue patrons coming here. To the main library to use our services, so.
I was again apart numbers, looks like they were up too, yeah.
And I have one last thing to ask, uh Gail, would you please read that uh proclamation, or resolution from the Virginia General Assembly?
Yes.
I know it's a lot of whereas's, but it's not, I don't know that we've had a. I know it's a lot of whereas's, but it's not, I don't know that we've had a proclamation from the state.
Uh, Senate Joint Resolution Number Three Eighty, whereas Richmond Public Library, an institution dedicated to increasing access to information. And promoting literacy for the benefit of the residents of Richmond, celebrated its one-hundredth anniversary in two thou- twenty-twenty-two. And whereas on November sixteen nineteen twenty-two, the Richmond City Council passed an ordinance for a bond issue. Of two hundred thousand dollars to support the creation of a public library for all. And whereas the first physical location of the Richmond Public Library opened on October thirteen nineteen twenty-four. At nine oh one West Franklin Street, with an inventory composed of family libraries and other collections. That had been donated to the institution. And whereas in July nineteen twenty-five, what would be named the Rosa D Bowser Branch Library of the Richmond Public Library. Opened at the Y W C A on North Seventh Street to provide Black Richmonders with access to books and other reading materials. And whereas what would become known as the Main Library of Richmond Public Library, opened in nineteen thirty at the corner of First Street and Franklin Street. With the support of philanthropist Sally Mae Dooley, the site would. Then undergo a major expansion beginning in nineteen sixty-seven, as, and was reopened to the public on September fifteen nineteen seventy-two. And whereas Richmond Public Library extended its reach into the neighborhoods of Richmond. Through the development of new branches, including the Belmont Branch in nineteen fifty-six. The Westover Hills Branch in nineteen fifty-nine, the Ginter Park Branch in nineteen sixty-four. The East End Branch in nineteen sixty-five, the Broad Rock Branch in nineteen seventy-seven. The West End Branch in nineteen seventy-eight, the North Avenue Branch in nineteen eighty-three, and the Hull Street Branch in nineteen eighty-seven. And whereas Richmond Public Library has deployed innovative strategies over the years to improve its ability to serve the res- residents of Richmond. Including the use of bookmobiles and kiosks to make access to materials more convenient for patrons. And whereas, the Main Library and eight branches of the Richmond Public Library underwent modernizing renovations between. Two thousand and two and twenty seventeen, enhancing the capacity for these locations to offer programs and classes. Event space, free wireless internet access, public computers and other services to support the residents of Richmond. And whereas with a new strategic plan in place that focuses on accessibility, early literacy, lifelong learning. And organizational strength, among other priorities, Richmond Public Library is poised to enjoy another century. Successfully serving the Richmond community, now therefore be it resolved by the Senate, the House of Delegates incurring. That to, the General Assembly here hereby commend Richmond Pub- Public Library on the occasion of its one-hundredth anniversary. And be it resolved further, the Clerk of the Senate prepare a copy of this resolution. For presentation to Richmond Public, Public Library as an expression of the General Assembly's admiration for the institution's history. And its contribu- contributions to the Commonwealth, Susan Clark Shar, Clerk of the Senate.
Lawyers.
Thank you, Gail.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else you wanted to, uh?
I think that's all of my report.
Okay, let's, um, go ahead and jump into, um, Garrett's, uh.
Well, there's your report. You can give, um.
We, we can do that, I just, yeah, I.
Whatever you wanna do.
I was just going through the others before that, but we can, I was going to his advocates, and now his, uh. Let, let's go and finish the regular reports before we do the committee reports, so, uh, Garrett on the task force.
Awesome, good afternoon, everyone, um, first, I just wanted to, to talk briefly about the Maya Smart event, I loved it. The breakfast, the, the evening program was phenomenal, invited two of my neighbors to come down, they absolutely enjoyed it. They purchased the book, they were like, this is amazing, um, so I just wanna thank again everybody for part of that. I remember talking to Chris last night, and I was, I was, I was like, Chris, your hands are all over this in my brain, but. But I thought it was just absolutely amazing, so I just wanted to say that, and I really love what Maya Smart said, as it related to the, the actual laundry literacy centers. That was something that was so out of the box, and so my, my thing, so, something that I will keep in mind, uh, for the future. Um, as it relates to advocacy, I know we're gonna talk about this more, uh, when we get to the final committee report, but things are shaping up to look really good for us. Again, thanking to, uh, Mayor Tony's administration for what they propose and this upcoming year's budget. And I know the work the city council is apparently working through is great, um, but as we always talk about, there's so much more work to be done. Uh, this doesn't stop there, we have more opportunities that we can capitalize on, and so we should, should do that through our advocacy and the emails and communications that we're. Uh, sending to our city council representatives, but also making sure that we're getting contacts over to our school representatives as well. So I wanna thank all of you for being able to send out the communication that we circulated right after our last, uh, meeting. I know a few of you did get responses, and people are, are preparing to, to get their city council or their school representatives down to their localized libraries. And we can get some of those photos, and we can add into some of our, uh, upcoming, uh, communications as well. And I'll talk to Jonathan Young and Kristen Larson, and John De Harris Muhammad, so I'm getting them down there very, very, uh, soon, uh, which is going to be great. Um, but as I said before, we wanna make sure we continue the communication, so, one, uh, you'll be receiving a communication, uh, from Gianna later this week. I will be including these and that communication, I think these are great for our city council representatives and our school representatives to include in their. Uh, digital communications, uh, because we really wanna make sure that we are again, as we said a little bit earlier. Getting this information to them, so they can disperse that to the community at large, um, so we can make sure that these programs are utilized and people can take advantage of them as much as possible. Um, but I also wanna take the opportunity through that next communication to educate them on the great program that happened last night. I mean, I know we, we really wanted to, you know, some were planning to come, but they couldn't make it, uh, on city council and school board, but. This, this amazing information, so much wealth of knowledge they can be able to spread to the community. Um, so we wanna make sure that we give them the high level like Maya did yesterday, um, and then invite them, uh, to check out the book and get that information to. Uh, their community members, I think, um, there was one, uh, RPS person, uh, I think she was in the third grade, I think she taught, she spoke. Towards the end of, of, of Maya's, um, evening program, and she just talked about, you know, how she thinks this book could be very much so utilized by. Her department chairs and how they can be able to incorporate that into their next school year curriculum, so, you know. That was a great example of how getting that information out can impact people and be able to be utilized for, for our kids.
Anything you wanted to bring up specifically about advocacy that we need to do, you'll be, we're seeing that, just follow what, what comes out of that from, uh, Gianna, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you, so if we, if you don't see something by early next week at least, uh, ping Gianna and ask her. Um, Chris, you have a spot for an update?
Um, I will just tell you some of the things that are, are coming up, we're gonna be having a meeting, uh, the week of May eighth. To talk about evaluation criteria for the new and expanding programs we're doing. If we don't start measuring now, before we start these programs. We lose the opportunity of learning what we could do better. Or for those of us who love to get money for the library, giving them actual data as to how effective. We are, and it's not something we usually do, but I think if we wrap that into this initiative. Will improve, which is what we always want, but we'll also be able to be much more professional when we reach out. To foundations and individuals with actual, and, you know, quantitative information on how we're doing. And that elevates our professionalism and our earnestness, I, I'm an earnest person, I think everybody. I'm delusional, I'm an earnest person, so we wanna be, you know, just trying hard. So that's really our next step in planning, evaluating, plan some more. And we, I have no, no doubt the library will execute enormously well.
Okay, thank you, um, okay, I don't have much of a chair report today, um. I think most of what I would like to touch on has already been covered, uh, this house successful, all of these programs, I think, um. That the things are moving along very smoothly, first thing I would like to do though, is recognize our exalted, uh, uh. Lawyer who, I guess, uh, our counsel, maybe is the way to put it, Laura, who is going to be leaving us, I'm sure you all saw, I think Scott sent something out about that. That, uh, Laura's been chosen as the new city attorney, um, so she's, uh.
We'll make it, yeah, we will. Don't let me cry, I love this board.
And Laura's been very patient with this board over the years, so. I have to give her a lot of credit there, and has worked through, uh, I think helping a lot of us understanding. Under, helping a lot of us understand the process of the city, and having patience with things, I think Gail and I were talking the other day about. The CERSE, uh, catalog update and how long it took to get contracts on that. And, um, we're talking, I said, but you know, Laura just stayed with it and kept us on that, and eventually got the contracts, um. Approved despite issues that, uh, that existed with some of her management on that, so, um, we really are sorry to lose you, Laura. But we are thrilled that you're going to be at a higher spot in the city and, uh, reachable for us, um, I hope. As we go forward, thank you, and here's just a little something for you, um, recognize you for all your years of service with us, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I, I, I represented, I'll just, can I just say?
Please.
I, I, um, represented the board and the libraries for seventeen years, um, and it's. I, I mean, I, I, I think my very first day at the city, and it's just. I, I just love this board because it's not, you, I mean, y'all don't do it for politics. Um, you don't do it for money, you don't do it, certainly don't do it for money, you don't do it for any benefit to yourselves, you do it because you believe in the libraries. And you believe in the benefit to the community, and, and so, I mean, uh, for whatever small part I had, which really, I think I was just a witness to it. It's, um, it's, it was good for the soul, so, I'm such a crier. So I just, I, I'm gonna miss you all, but, um, I'm not leaving, I mean, I'm at the city attorney's office still, so call me, I will help, I will, you know. Now you have a contact over there, and Shannon is gonna take good care of you all and keep you out of trouble with, uh, FOIA. And I should.
One of your hardest jobs, Shannon.
I should have told Shannon, because, because we had some discussion about the Law Library that for seventeen years, I've heard about the Law Library, so.
Good, because delivered on your last day.
On my last day, so, um, thank you very much, thank you all very much, it's been fun.
Thank you, we appreciate it, could you, uh, go ahead and introduce Shannon to us?
Yeah, so, oh, thank you, so Shannon Fitzgerald has been with our office for a year, two years. Um, and she is in the litigation division, which is what, that was my division, so I picked her. And I'm excited for her because she gets to now witness all the goodness you all do, I told her it's not a super hard board. Um, at all, really. And, um, and it's gonna be great, and wait till you see the main library renovations, that's always, it's just. Oh, and one more thing, um, so when I, I just have to tell you all that, when I was interviewed for the position, I talked a lot about the library board. And told counsel how great this board was, and.
Thank you.
Asked them if they had seen the renovation plans for the main library, and they all had, and they loved it, and so, it just. You know, so you had, you know, got me as an advocate, so, call me.
And Shannon, we are happy to, to have you stepping in, uh, and it's interesting that you came for litigation, we really hope that you won't need to litigate skills with us. But, uh, but it's good to know that they're there, so thank you.
I'm looking forward to it, thank you.
And, as Laura said, the biggest thing sometimes with us, is either getting contracts worked through, or keeping us from getting in trouble on FOIA and. Uh, open meeting rules and things, but Laura's gotten us a little bit under control, so.
Well, she's kept us under control.
Yeah, we, we still have those issues of not replying all occasionally, and, and things like that, but we, we've made progress. And, um, and she's been patient, uh, at least particularly with me, as I figured out how to do some of this, so thank you. Um, I'd like to mention a couple of other things, um. I don't know how much everyone spends on the board packet, how much time, there's a lot that's there, and. Um, it often looks like it's sort of the same stuff, so, um, I'm not suggesting you're not spending enough time or you should spend more time. I'm just saying that I always look at it and look for some things in there, say, okay, well, how are we doing on some of the metrics? And I just, uh, wanna compliment Scott and his team, that we have really recovered well from COVID, if you look at the numbers. Some of them are off a little bit from a year ago, some are up a little bit from a year ago, um, but overall, the branches are doing very well on door counts. On circulation, um, on the programs are getting back to a, a nice level, um. I was really impressed with how much e-content through between last year and this year. Which is really surprising, because you would have figured that the big bump in the e-content was in the middle of the pandemic. Um, and as we came out of it, I sort of thought, well, that'll taper off, and we'll see as the, uh, true, so, the. The book circulation went up, you think you'd see the, uh, the e-content went down, and it isn't, it's just a, a nice, um. Aggregate, you know, bump to it, so overall, we're seeing a lot more use in the library. E-content this past year went up as much as having one more branch, in my mind, so I mean, it's, it's, and you think about that with, with that, it's a big, big increase. Um, Law Library, I will mention Laura, since you're still here today, I, I. I, I'm a little confused by it in the finance report, and if y'all are too, um, great, it may just be mine. Uh, the, the issue that we get, just to let Shannon know, is whether we're getting the funds from there. Which comes from, I know from the case, the fee on the cases in, uh, circuit board, I guess, or. Circuit general district, okay, um, but that the, uh, there's always a bit of a lag. Um, I was just trying to figure out the, when I looked at the funding that we'd seen on that page, on my glasses, because I'm.
Page twenty.
Thank you. Yeah, so, on the Law Library. Um, what was it that sort of confused me there? The, the fact that we're showing a negative four hundred and fifteen thousand on the unallegated, I just, I, I was just a little confused. We showed a negative two fifty-six on rollover, um. And year-to-date of one fifty-nine, I'm just, are we straight with the way it's being accounted for, and where are we on that, really? I mean, it's just, it's a, it's a big number to see there in that.
Yeah, and those are like catch-ups from previous years, so the deficit there is from previous years.
Right.
And I can't explain how that deficit started and where it's at.
I know.
I can say that the expenses continued to grow for a long time. And one thing that we've done recently is reduce the number of actual physical items that we were getting. We're, we're having to, uh, buy, so we signed contracts last year, uh, for print items. And we could not get out of those when we discovered that we were one of the few institutions that was still getting print legal books. Westlaw informed us that, I believe we were like one of two that were still getting them, and the print stuff is now astronomically expensive. Compared to electronic, so that's one of the things that Charlie, Ben and I did when Charlie got here about ten minutes after he was here and said. Hey, do we still need to get all this print stuff? And we determined that, no, we do not, it is not helping us and it is not necessary. So eliminating that will eliminate a very large amount of monthly expense from the Law Library. Upwards of, upwards of about ten thousand dollars a month.
And while doing it, it increases the online access to. Westlaw publications and, and so on, so we actually have more, I mean, we haven't lost anything by getting rid of.
No, we'll have much, it, it's, it's actually the electronic information, legal information is so much stronger than the. Uh, inaccurate than the print stuff, like, we, we don't have to put pocket parts in, we don't have to chase. Codes and regulations and keep those updated, which were a constant job, that all is done, and the other thing that. We're working on is expanding the Westlaw access beyond this location, like, it may be possible for. Uh, library users to visit a branch library and get on Westlaw, so somebody in the east end or the west end or anywhere in the system could. Get access to Westlaw to do legal research if they need to do it, so that would be helpful to a citizen who is trying to. Represent themselves or a law firm who's trying to get access to something that maybe they don't have access to, um, that's what this, uh. This is for, so, have I, have I hit it, okay?
Okay, and ju- just to, to clarify, I had no, uh, no concerns about where we're headed with that, from the. Changes that we've made to the structure. Changes that we've made to the structure of it, the movement of the law library. I'm very much in favor of making it more accessible. I'm just concerned that we're. Do we have anything that's gonna come around as we look at this and say we've got good budget news as Garrett mentioned? Are we going to at some point say, oh, well, we've gotta suddenly take four hundred or five hundred thousand out of our budget that we hadn't planned to? And in the years passed, city always just says, oh, yeah, well, okay, we'll write that off or whatever. But it's, it just bothers me.
I know that we're attached to this deficit.
I can't speak for the finance department or the budget department in terms of how that is.
We know it's actually coming in, I guess, to them, so that our budget is.
Yes, we've reached out to the courts. We know that they're they're giving their contribution to the city, that it's electronically being transmitted over. Um, we know that we're receiving the funds, so um.
Okay.
That's pretty much where we're at, so and. Uh, we'll continue to work with the finance department and the budget department to solve this problem. Um, so.
Okay.
Hopefully we'll have a solution, although I.
The the problem goes back before anyone on this board, I think.
Continue and we're all dead and gone too.
Yeah, it's just uh, I I keep having hope that we'll eventually resolve it and have a clean slate going forward, but anyway. I think those were the main things I wanted to touch on. Um. Like I said, we've already talked about how well the uh, the whole early childhood initiative is going. I thought it was interesting how Maya really, one one thing I will say, and I think Chris is covering it in her team. Maya pushed very heavily on not just the uh. Up to third grade literacy, you know, the the learning to read up to third and reading to learn after third. Um, and not just the preschool initiative side. And I, which is, you hear a lot about the preschool initiatives and I mean, it's it's a very politically uh. Popular uh type of thing. She really did a beautiful job, I thought, of the, you know. Birth to eighteen months, maybe?
Baby to two.
Yeah, two, two years. Yeah, she really did that nicely and it's a reminder. And that's one that we need to think about how we can support those parents.
Completely, yeah.
Yeah, because it really is. I mean, it's just so important. And that's also, as she said, when you pick up. Because of that, some of the other issues that may be there with kids in time to address them, so. Um, anyway, I think everything's going great on all of that. Um. Let's see, Garrett, did you have anything else on the finance that you wanted to cover from finance report or you're?
Only thing I can report is that uh, I think council is still working through amendments and they haven't finalized the budget yet. I think they're close.
No, they introduced it. On Monday and. And I think that the next meeting is May eighth and that's when it will be adopted.
Is there another public hearing or anything?
We're finished.
We're finished.
And we didn't have any surprise cuts that slid in on us in there, anything that we know of. You know, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I I I didn't hear of anything. They have to finish by beginning of May so they can sign the teacher contract.
They're pretty finished.
And so they are, they were, I thought they were all over but the shouting two weeks ago. Um, so I I was there on Monday to make sure that nothing changed, um, and I didn't see anything change, so we should be on track. We'll know for sure. When we can start sending our thank you notes and our reminders to everybody because. That's the really important thing is to thank these folks who stepped up and gave us approximately. One point five million dollars more this year than last year. So that is a significant increase for us and it's gonna allow us to do some things that we were trying to do before the pandemic and we can continue to do now.
You can truly say we've got back to where we were before the pandemic.
Yes, and we will.
Taken this long, but.
Right, and it's. They heard what we asked for. We need more. We need more access, more hours, more programs. Um, and they're responding, so thanking them is the next thing and then reminding them that we need more.
Next year.
We're just like yours.
Remind them every day, we need more.
Well, and this was.
No, we we constantly remind.
Right, we need more and we're doing all of these other things and we're helping solve community, helping with community issues and providing information, so.
Janet, do you or Cheryl have anything? Uh, you from the committee and Cheryl from knowing the building?
I have been thinking about facilities. Would you like to hear what I've been thinking? A few months ago, I think it was Bill said at a meeting that our branches, or he might have mentioned a particular branch, was too small.
I probably did.
And and he used harsh words, so. I've been thinking about. Um. Apparently it's time to talk about branches again. I know you feel like you just.
Well, we might as well because uh, that was the next part of the two thousand nine master plan. And Gail can uh chime in, uh, so you needed to do a master plan for the main library. That's complete.
Well, yes, I've been thinking about how we approach the branch situation. And maybe you can tell me how you did it in, was it oh eight or oh nine that you did that? So. We, as a board, working with the staff, need to say. Here's what we say a branch should have. Um, and we should work on that list because we, we want them to have adequate meeting rooms. We want study rooms. We want collection space, but we also want activity space. We want great storytime space. So I feel like we should work on making a statement. Here's what a Richmond Public Library branch should be able to offer to the public. And I don't know if that already exists from the last time. Gail, do you remember?
In the master plan? It's interesting you say this because I had a, an idea. They're building a. Uh, new apartment building at Grove and Thompson. What if we approached them about putting five thousand square feet as a branch to replace Belmont?
And Belmont's our biggest issue.
Right, right. Belmont's the biggest, that's why I was thinking of that.
And and that's good, but I think we should be prepared to say, here's what a branch should have.
Yeah, we do know that. And I think in the two thousand eight plan. Had general needs. They had a different approach in two thousand eight, the architects then about. Kind of identifying a type of library for, they were trying to say, this is a. Tech library where people go for the internet or this is a kid's library. And I think we've. Found that really, all the branches kind of need everything.
Yeah.
But, but so we, so that was a little different approach, but I think generally. Tech is one, meeting space, programming.
Well, tech is so well integrated, great as now, it's come to be assumed. You can. Plug this in here, you can flip the switch and do that and it's not like we talk about it so much like a separate thing.
I I think, but for, when I say tech, um, access to the net for people who don't have wifi at home. So.
So two thousand and eight was fifteen years ago. And in two thousand eight, some of us had MySpace pages. So many things have changed since two thousand and eight with that master plan.
We had modems for crying out loud.
We still had the AOL CD-ROM that they would get in their mailbox, uh, get their email account. Yes, it, the next thing to do would be a master plan for the branch libraries and going and assessing the branch libraries and saying, okay. Based on the neighborhoods around this library branch, this is what we need. We know for sure that all of our branches need study rooms and larger meeting rooms and.
Story space, story time.
Storytime space, absolutely. If we're committed to early learning and literacy, we are going to need spaces to welcome. Uh, neighborhood families so that we can have space to do the wonderful activities that we saw Maya do upstairs. You know, book babies and we had this. Amazing community partner come in and did art for babies. And it was a community partner, she's, they've been to Westover Hills, they're working at the main library. And it was difficult for our staff to work in that space because they had to have the the little, the the babies, I mean, we're talking three-year-olds. Uh, in the storytime space. And we didn't want to move them to another space and we didn't have enough room for them, so we had to just kind of on the fly figure it out and bring some of the other babies into the program, which was great, but. That's hard for our staff and it it's also showing our families that we're not really thinking of their needs, so they're telling us what they want. We have to be able to start responding. We can't do it in some of our spaces, so a master plan will point these details out and. Identify problems, identify opportunities and let us move forward. That's what we did with the main library master plan and it's now in the city's hands. Again, the cities own our buildings, so they are the ones who we need to make the case with. This is what we need and it's important and you all do that with your advocacy. And so when we're doing all of this stuff, it's just, it's reminding everyone what we do, how we do it and what we need, so. Uh, a master plan is the next step. We need to figure out when we can begin it, so uh, let's start.
I'm ready today.
Okay. We will add it to the list.
Shannon, I'm gonna suggest, we go maybe a little more than just adding it to the list in the master plan. I think we need the master plan on that. Um, and I think we need to quickly do exactly what you said as to the, here's the minimum that we need in each branch, okay? Meeting rooms of at least.
We need to be pushy. We can't be told, oh, well, this building's only this big.
Right.
And we need to say, and you're gonna fix it.
Right.
How?
Uh, exactly. So what I was gonna suggest is that, you know, one of the concerns we heard about the uh mask plan for here was the process. Took so long with, and not Laura's fault, but with the bid going out uh for the the uh. Proposal there and language having to be added and going back out after the responses came in the first time and all of that, and then a somewhat less responsive. Um, uh, contract award winner than than some of us might have liked as far as. How long they took to do things and they're cleaning up, that we got a little later possibly in. Asking for the money in the capital budget this year, but we were on, we were on time with the schedule as far as getting it in there before December. But if we'd gotten in there six months earlier, we'd have had six more months of people thinking about it and it would have been beneficial. Um, if we start looking at the branches on a master plan, there's no way. That we're going to get any request for capital in, in the upcoming capital budget, my gut. I just don't see it happening in the next um, seven to eight months. And we can, just the process, if we have to bring in anyone to do that, I think we need to put it together internally. No external contractor on it, need to get the basics on there, and then I think we need to say. Here's what we want for everyone, but we need to target, and I think Gail has hit it very strongly on Belmont's what we need to target right now. It's our least. Um, capable branch. It's in a growing area of the city. Um, it serves. Multiple districts because it it picks up, uh, what is it, the fifth that has no library?
Second.
Second.
Ours doesn't.
Second, second that has no library.
Second instance, yeah.
Okay, so it it really, you know, is important there and as you said, they're getting ready to build that building. Um, we've got additional buildings going on in Scott's addition and there's some possibilities there. And as uh, Brent's not here today, but there's another opportunity uh right on the boulevard, almost at Grove also, that. There may be an ability to say. Let's move that library, build one completely, so we're not trying to renovate, we're not having the library shut down and so on, and then sell that branch. So I think we we should try to look at that as something that we put a proposal together for the city quickly. Not looking at each of the nine branches um, in detail for this. I know Scott doesn't like that approach and that's okay. Um, I just think, like I said, that we should go ahead and and y'all can disagree with me on that. I think that we can start on the master plan idea, but if we take the time to look at all the branches and analyze them completely. We're gonna be twenty twenty-five budget before we are twenty twenty-six's budget before we get there.
But I think Janet's.
No, I think Janet, yeah, I mean, up with. General standards for all the branches.
Absolutely.
About analyzing each branch.
That's what I'm saying, let's, let's not ask for anything.
Minimum of five thousand square feet. They must all have tutoring rooms. They must all. Yeah, no.
And quickly from that, say Belmont's the first one we want to approach.
But, but.
And.
Starting.
Oh, yeah, I agree. That's why I said, let's get that.
Yeah.
Minimums, the basics of what.
Many other. What's the square footage of Belmont? Cheryl, what's?
Four, I said forty-seven hundred.
Square footage of Belmont, is it about four thousand?
Uh, no, it's it's uh more than that, but that that was the, the thing smoking. For me, say this for, that was the sad part was when Belmont opened, it was too small.
They want it.
Yeah.
Five thousand square feet there. And and that addition didn't go along to, it didn't open up to sixty-five. But so when the planning, the Westover Building, they were gonna make it a ten thousand square foot building after bringing through council and and everything. They've been, by the way, it's showing uh council, most of the most. Uh, they expended to put a library for the Westover Building's residents. We end up after, they they wanted to build a ten thousand square foot uh building for the primary building. We ended up with a fair amount of five thousand square feet.
Yeah.
And I think around uh, a hundred thousand, where uh, Oakland helped with that. But yeah, that's something that's been, been known all this time that you have a city never really paid for quite that square footage.
It it ha- it has issues at Belmont of space. Uh, you can go up, but you can't really go out. You can't fix parking. You go up, you lose a lot in. Um, getting from floor to floor, um, as a high cost associated, et cetera, which is why, once again, I'm. Really would love to get behind Janet's idea here that we, we get an overall plan there and then we look at that because I think there are two or three targets of opportunity to make. Replacing Belmont now.
And I'm gonna add.
That won't be here in three years, honestly.
When we look at models in other library systems. It is not uncommon and of course, we, every library system has their own deal where a developer says. Give me your little teeny library in this wonderful, amazing space and I'll build you a much bigger. Library that's a little, you know, out of. The, these kinds of horse trades uh might be reasonable tools. Given, you know, every city has their own rules. Uh. It'll, it'll, and and Scott's a dealmaker, you're a dealmaker, you know, just to kind of, yeah, so it's, I think. Gail and you both have a, if there's more tools we can put, making a deal. With a developer and, you know, we won't give you your approvals unless you do the, or. You know, whatever you can do in an Italian accent would be.
Well, Richmond is growing so fast. You know, and it takes so long to get anything done. I'm thinking in the future, we need to start looking at. Alternatives to branches because there's not gonna be, well, one thing, we're not gonna be able to afford the the land purchased, you know, to build one. But I'm looking, I'm thinking areas like, you know, the growth in Scott's addition, the growth of Jeff Davis Highway.
Yeah.
And their access to libraries, you know, I mean, that, nobody can walk to a library from, you know, those places. So we need to start looking at where can we. Get some facility, you know, under our purview.
We'd make that part of Janet's job, okay?
You know, I I mean, yeah, and and with the.
Driving around looking for places.
And with the efforts to, you know, go green and not have people driving around Richmond. You know, we need to push the, the libraries of places, you know, they they should be available to all neighborhoods. And and accessible, you know, walking distance or whatever, you know, to go along with the go green movement.
Some of that can be, you know, we talked about a bookmobile, again, you know, going, going back to the sixties a little bit, but um. That there's, there's some benefit particularly Jeff Davis that could fit in well with. Um, I mean, as far as Scott's addition, my first thought on that would be why we need to replace Belmont and and it would help with that. I can't believe we can't find a developer in Scott's addition who would say. I'll give you two thousand feet or fifteen hundred feet and you do it as a, you know, very limited branch library with evening hours only for. You know, X and so on and, you know. Have sort of mini branches in some of these, um, because that is. I mean, the people, you do see people walking from Scott's addition over to Belmont, but um.
Well, and every time you see an apartment building with a storefront on the bottom. Right.
And you look at ones on Broad right now, not at Scott's addition, but near Scott's addition, uh. I mean, they're not filling this up yet.
Where the dairy. Ben was just saying, they're putting a huge building.
They are.
We're scaring them, they're going.
Yeah, Ben, Ben wants to say something.
Not scared.
Not scared of the future. Um, part of the RPL one hundred story that we are telling this year is about. How the libraries were prioritized and planned and promised. And, you know, then at some point delivered and um, I'm. I'm truly not waiting to uh debate one side or the other, but just simply objectively, as Clay pointed out. um, you know, the, the first investment in a purpose-built library was Belmont. Right? And the second was Westover Hills, right? And this was ten years after a updated Bowser branch was promised that, you know, didn't come to fruition. Um, and then when the East End branch finally opened, acting as a park in sixty-four, sixty-five, the library in Jackson Ward, Bowser Branch was closed. But as many people who, so a few people who came to the RPL one hundred and, um, history talk at, um, Broad Rock, um, spoke about like, they were like, well, why did they close the Bowser branch when they opened the East End branch? Those branches aren't near each other, you know, it's not, it's not like, oh, well, they're down the street from each other. They're across the valley from each other. So, um, I don't disagree. Obviously it's objectively true that Belmont, you know, something needs to happen, but, uh, just might want to be mindful of, you know, it's a history and the narratives that are out there about our institution.
Ben, Ben is right that there's a lot to consider. For instance, when, uh, some of our volunteers spoke up about relocating the main library, my first thought is the second and the fifth district do not have branches. And this is the closest to those. So it makes sense to, to have, um, the main library here. Um, it plus the other responsibilities that Maine has that the branches do not have that require space. So nothing is going to be perfect, but it just seems like with all this growth in, uh, apartments and condos and, and businesses that there might be an opportunity for a public-private partnership.
Well, and this is why we should do a master plan. So we're circling back to the beginning of the discussion. We need a master plan with the guiding principles of what is the expectations, core expectations of our branch locations.
Right.
And then we need to also get into the specifics of what we need throughout the city. I wouldn't want to do a, uh, any plan that would just single out one library over another. I'm not going to say that Belmont's need their whole streets music. Any, so
Yeah.
I would advise that we do it for all places.
That makes sense.
And be equitable and, uh, considerate of all places because all of them, all of them need to be addressed. All of them are undersized. All of them have unique community needs. The last master plan was fifteen years ago. Again, MySpace exists. It doesn't exist anymore. So the ideas and concepts that were presented were good ones at the time and they served us well. They need to be updated and we need to do it for every location. I don't want to leave anybody out.
And I would kind of ask that we look at demographic information for the city to see what the needs are for particular, uh, communities. For instance, you know, the Jeff Davis and Hispanic community. Scott's Edition is more, I guess, uh, singles, not, not particularly families, but, you know, they might, uh, need more meeting spaces, you know? So, you know, look at the, the demographic kind of stuff, practice before we make some uniform decisions.
Well, and we have that information. The city has developed the Richmond three hundred. That's a comprehensive plan. It says where the city intends to go. So now we have that advantage that we didn't have in two thousand and eight of that information and those kind of, uh, ideas about where the city could go. And we can align with that and be in step with where the CIP process is going and the planning department is going. We have to be, we have to stay in those lanes for us to even have a shot at getting the funding because the cities owns these buildings, uh, to, to, to do it. Okay.
Yeah. So you'll sort of start that process.
We'll have a facilities committee meeting.
Committee.
We'll pursue this idea.
Perfect. Um, Emily, anything on governance you want to?
No updates from government.
Okay. Um, Scott, I don't have any unfinished business. Do you?
I don't.
You don't? Okay. And I don't have any new business. So I'm going to, uh, accept the, the solicitor motion to adjourn from somebody?
I was looking at the western brand. Is there something going on with the juvenile program over there?
Who knows? Is it, is it?
The numbers, uh, things paid fourteen.
There's a lot of construction around, street work and stuff like that. So maybe people have been reluctant to. Every time it goes that way, there's some sort of bottleneck that detours and things.
Juvenile.
Circulation is.
No, the, um, programs.
In March, it was, right in March, it was way, way off.
They usually have a lot of young folks in there.
Nice. So I know that we have a lot of, uh, we do more young adult programs there than we do in anywhere else. So
Right.
It just could have been a month where we didn't have as, as many programs.
I mean, it dropped from a hundred and sixty-two to eleven.
Yeah, I sort of wondered whether, uh, when you look at the, uh, the prior months with the, uh, the attendance of it at one sixty-two, as you said, going down to eleven, whether some of this was Easter break. Um, for any of these, you know, that particular one serves a lot of the, uh, vocal and private schools in the west end as well as the Mary Montford and Albert Hill Fountain and so on. And all of them, because of the way Easter fell this year, might have shown up in our March attendance if people were away during those times. So they may have been putting on events when nobody, I don't know. I wondered about that too, though.
Could just be an error.
It could be.
Just a strange drop, you know?
Yeah, well, I mean, particularly when you look at the number of programs, you say you don't even have two per program. I mean.
We'll check. I, I, I think that's just a, I think that's a clerical error.
It's an error. Okay.
But I'll, I'll look into it.
They've been redoing sidewalks around. It's just a big old mess.
The people still going in and borrowing books.
And I also wanted to say thank you for putting all this information about the cameras in there. Yes, quite a bit of stuff. But I think people need to know that they're being watched. Uh, we need to have access to the legal aspects of, you know.
With banning on the lines. Yeah, we have to be, you know.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Sharon, anything else you have? Okay. Let's, uh, somebody make a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Okay, Janet, a second.
Seconded.
Gail, all in favor? Aye, okay. We are adjourned. Thank.